All right, we pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ball call please.
Justice McFatrich.
Here.
Justice Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Kim and Tom are excused.
Motion approved minutes of the August 14th, 2017 board meeting.
So moved.
Second. Any questions, additions, deletions?
No.
If there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and notices, general question period for members of the community. As we have no one here, we'll move on. Mr. Petro. I'm not sure where Mike is.
Good evening. As you have no doubt noticed, the water project here in the village has come to a halt for an undetermined period of time. This halt is the result of the general contractor terminating the contract with the village and the town. This termination is the contractor's way to try to get out of the responsibility of finishing this water project. There is still much to be completed to get this work accomplished in the village and the town. Could be looking at a completion date that may very well be into next spring. The town and the village are exploring all avenues to hold, to sell, construction, or excavating, or whatever it's going by today, accountable for their responsibilities according to the contract that they signed. The anger, disappointment, and loss of patience with this company has hit an all-time high, and now the lawyers are stepping in to come to some sort of agreement to complete the project. There are some avenues available to fund the completion of this work, but it will take some time and effort to open these financial pathways. The delay is by no means the fault of the village and/or the town. This situation sits squarely on the shoulders of the construction company and its failure to complete the contract in the specified timeframe. If you are familiar with this, you will remember that the original contract ending date was the first of May. We are now halfway through September, a little bit more than that, and this contract has still not been completed. We have been very generous, some would say too generous, when we extended the completion date in the hope of a reasonable date of completion. We will continue to do everything we possibly can to hold those accountable and finish this water project. The hydrant flushing will begin as soon as possible to clean out the water lines. We are getting calls of concern about water discoloration and pressure issues. Let me assure everyone that the water is completely safe to consume, wash your clothes and dishes in, to bathe in, brush your teeth, et cetera. The water is tested on a regular basis and has been found to be free of any issues that could harm our consumers. We are developing a new flushing sequence that is very different from our old method because we are now dealing with more water lines, more valves, and a change in the water direction in much of the system. It will take at least two weeks to completely flush the system and get things back in order. We will make this work. The DBW crew will be putting forth its best effort to complete the flushing and get the system back to its normal operating condition. As always, if there are concerns about water, wastewater, or any other situation here in the village, I ask that you please call the village office first and let us know about the situation so that we can come up with a solution. We have been experiencing some playground issues, dealing with inappropriate behavior, and we've received a number of complaints from parents who have their young children down at the park and playing. We know that this is an isolated group that is primarily involved in this harassing behavior, and it'll be no longer, and it will not be tolerated, by this village board. The park is for the village children and people who are visiting this village. This behavior of harassment and bullying will not be tolerated. This is village property. The village has the right, and will exercise this right, to ban anyone from that playground who will continue to be in this type of behavior. We will call the authorities. We will make sure that the curfew at 9:00 PM is enforced. This harassment, this bullying, this swearing is no longer going to be tolerated at our playground. There will be consequences for these inappropriate actions. We are waiting now, the state police, to become a little more involved and deal with the situation that we had a couple weeks ago. We will follow through with this, and the playground will be a place for children to go and play and feel comfortable playing. That's what it is. It's a playground. It's not a place for harassment and bullying behavior. We are asking parents to monitor this inappropriate behavior, and this is not going to be tolerated any longer. Thank you. Who would like to go first?
I do not have anything this month at all, other than the fact that the water pits are going to get put in in October when I take a vacation. I have a couple people that are going to assist with that.
Let us know so we can help.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Let us know.
Justice McFatrich?
Couple of upcoming events. There is a Champlain author visit on Thursday, this Thursday, September 21st, at 6:30 PM at the Champlain Meeting House. Richard Frost is coming to discuss, Dr. Frost is coming to discuss the Plattsburg Military Installations, and also some of his other books. Should be an excellent presentation. And the Champlain Book Club is meeting next week on the 28th, also at the Meeting House, and we're always looking for newcomers, so please come join us. I'm excited that the electric vehicle charger is, has been installed, not hooked up yet, but it's almost ready. And with that installation, that means that we will get the recognition as a clean energy community. We fulfilled our four requirements, which is pretty amazing, and that should open up some grant money for us. So, thank you to everyone who helped with that, in particular.
Right.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that a lot.
Well, you're welcome.
There's a lot of interest in that. Okay. I also, I'm not sure if I mentioned this last month, but I really want to give a sincere thanks to Joy and Tom Tubert for that stage. We had a wonderful concert with the Wicked Brothers. Joy and I and a couple of other people are now in the process of doing some more fundraising so that we can expand it, and our idea is that we have asked, I think, nine local people to sing a Christmas song. We're going to produce a CD, and we're going to sell them for Christmas gifts. So it's all local singers, and that's going to be fundraising for that, to increase the size of the stage. And then the only other thing I want to say is that I'd like to reinforce what the mayor said about the playground behavior. I'm down there often. I know the small group is causing those problems. The swearing and the smoking is rampant. They've been told many, many times not to do this, so we really are going to have to have some consequences, and we're going to have to ban them from the playground. And also, I want to say that, parents, you need to either come here to the office if it's office hours, or you need to contact one of us and let us know, because going on Facebook and talking badly about the Champlain Playground is not helping. We need you to be involved, we need your, we need your help. We need you to say something to them or contact us so that we can deal with it. That really, really made a big difference. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thanks for your work.
Is there a particular time of day that you're seeing this?
Right now.
Well, it's generally from about 4:00 to 7:00.
Yeah, it's usually on the weekends, weekend afternoons.
But it's, it's after, I mean, after school session, it's after school, a little bit later after school, and then it's, yeah, it's right now, for about three hours, and young children are there, even with parents. They get told to get out of the way, you know, move over, and they're intimidated, the parents are intimidated. And it really is about five kids. So we will, we will deal with this.
And you said we're waiting for the police to become more involved? What are we waiting for?
There's an incident, there's some tables were burnt, and we have called the police. They just had the opportunity, they're busy looking at other areas, but they will, they will come over and take care of this. We know who it is, we have it on tape, Mike has it on tape. We're just going to hand the, hand the tape over to the, to the police department? They know, I told them, they know who it is. And the kids know who they are. I told them, be ready, because the police are coming after you. This is spending an extended period of time, I'm sure they've forgotten. We will follow up on this. We will. The report from the clerk treasurer, please.
Everyone has their August expense and revenue reports.
Tell the board about what you learned with the, with the transfers.
Oh, we need to, because this warrant, we have a transfer that needs to be done before we pay one of these bills. It actually needs to be, money needs to be transferred before you approve the warrant. It's actually illegal to spend money out of an account that has no, that just wasn't cleared for. So tonight, before we approve the warrant, we do have a transfer. The transfer is from A599, which is a fund out, it's $2,000, to go to A81011, which is the consultant that pays for the, our zoning river street.
Yeah.
$2,000 to cover the river street bill.
It's from general fund?
Yes.
Make a motion.
For the second?
Second.
Ball call please.
Justice Garrett.
Garrett.
Justice Garrett.
Hi.
Justice McFatrich.
Hi.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay. Motion to approve the warrant.
And we have additional invoices to the warrant of $14,708.90, which brings the warrant total to $28,847.60.
Make a motion with the additional invoices.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Okay, no discussion. Ball call please.
Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Justice McFatrich.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
I'm going to do a report, but it's pretty much the same thing we've been doing. We have two water meters left. Trying to get those stuff going, so we can get our tanks filled. Thursday, we're all waters coming up to help us on our sequence of flushing. It's quite a little change. The, the meter pits, or the pressure valves, the directions changed. A lot more leaks, so we didn't have, we really had one we requested before, now we've got two for us, and about, about five ways more waters than we had one, so that's changed considerably. So, hoping next week we can start our flushing. We've got a few water leaks, one's going to be dug tomorrow up on East Service Road. There's a water leak there, actually, quarters, we did that one, we're going to hop over to bring it in. There's one over in the rail bed, a little behind Kentex, and we'll dig, dig it following day, so this one's done, we're going to dig it the same day. That's a leak from the valve box. And I don't know as far as, I don't know what we're going to find, but we, we held off because when we worked in there, the bike got, turned on the side of the bike path, actually, the block's found it, and we'll dig it to the bike path, dig it through there, so it's on the side, but other than that, I go, we're probably here next week. It's supposed to be due on Thursday, but we figure probably, probably by sometime next week, we'll be here. Other than that, we're, like I said, we're still wanting to get our installs, and tomorrow we'll be doing water in areas. See how that goes.
Can we get the drive-through?
Yeah, a few that we have to.
Sure.
A few that we have to leave out, but yeah, this is supposed to be due tomorrow, so that's all I have. And we can stay, stay in and let her act, and the charging station, if I get changed tomorrow, I'll get it fixed like I love. Everything is done, I'm just going to wire it up and get it to work again, so.
Well, then you can give it a try, yeah.
Yep. As soon as that's done, I'll call and let them know. I think they just have to wait it over, or, I don't think they have to come here.
No, I don't think they do.
So they're going to be, they're going to be able to figure it all out.
Some kind of electronics.
So we'll be able to, if they're versed on it, go, if they're the size of it up.
Yeah.
Smaller. But I don't have too much.
How many meters do you have left tonight?
Do you have tanks online? Six. They're all done. Here's my real shop, I've got three of them, one of them's in the trench. We're totally across the border, floor and trench, and some are tough. They're all, you know, too much, all big stuff, and there's no room to configure piping, so we have to make it fit. I've got that, I've got the pit at Eagle Fields, I just got Friday, the fitting, one fitting's given to that, so I've got to get in the meter pit and do that in Eagle Fields, and the park to shovel away. And I've got two residents, two houses, the rest of them are all, you know, big ones, so. And I have, I also have a fresh shop, which has to be, I think it's going to be revealed here. Over another week or so, it's over within two weeks here, hopefully they're all done and we can start filling tanks, because they've been, they've been wanting to fill the tanks and can't. And we see like this is going to be a chance, but the shop, muddy balance, the whole ones, you can't.
Right.
And you've been pushing with your research.
Also, Mike, with the, our dumping spot, is that getting better? It seems like there's an awful lot of stuff down there.
There's a lot going in, but, I mean, getting better? Yeah, we, we had some early on this year that were hauling in from places that shouldn't have been, and the ones that I caught, maybe I'm taking out, you know, make some choices, take it out or get, like work, so.
Right.
And they, oh, we're sorry, we didn't know, we thought, you want to fill it? No, we didn't want to fill it. It's been all right lately. We haven't had really any issues, I think the word probably got out, because I know some people said, oh, we can't put it there, you know, so I think the word got out, but I haven't had any issues lately.
Is, are the tapes for that reviewed at all?
If we have issues, we find something, we go back through them, and it's recorded all the time, so it's kind of hard drive, so. But to sit down and just check them all the time, you know, we find something, we have an issue with something, then we go back and see, and see how it got there, or who brought it there, but as far as checking all the time, I don't know.
It doesn't, it doesn't take long for people to call here and say, why is this, why is this worth some dumping there, or why is the dumping this stuff?
If you go, I mean, there is one of those things.
I see a lot of dumping going on. I don't recognize the people, but that's not saying anything, but, you know, also, a big commercial thing pulled in one evening when we were walking in dumps.
Oh, that shouldn't be.
And I don't know if they were doing a job within the village, you know.
If it's commercial, if it's commercial, though, or it's not at all?
Period, even if they're taking down trees or someone.
Well, they would have to prove that, yes.
Usually if, usually those guys don't bring that stuff. If it happens to be a stump they're grinding or something that's right here, I mean, sometimes they'll call me, hey, can I bring that, you know what I mean? We know where it's coming from, we can see this thing, it's a little different, but we don't, usually, as a rule, we don't take commercial because.
And I didn't recognize who it was at all, but it was a big, long thing, and it was semi-dark, so I couldn't get any license numbers off of it, but, all right, I'll just seem to call and have them review.
Here, just give us the date, the break's went down, and we can go through.
But no, as far as going and checking every day, it's there, so we always go back to it.
It takes some time. You and I spent almost an hour or more looking at the boat lounge today.
Your problems down there, too?
Just a couple things. Had people come in, too. There was some, they noticed some stuff that was left in the river, so we went down and checked it out and took it out. Took it out. Made for supplies.
Nice.
Hey, is that it, Mike?
Yeah.
Thank you. I know you're very busy.
And, I don't know if you guys saw, but we did do a couple big trucks that went back, whoever, we just go back over and get them together.
Oh, okay. And I haven't seen them.
We did, we had the two big trucks, last week, last weekend, and it was out on the weekends, so we did, or, no, we didn't report it. He's supposed to get back when he would, he has off, so we can get together with one that.
It does look good.
Great.
Okay, make your mark. First one is?
JCO monthly report for August and the mega-electro-electricity proposal.
We'll talk about that under new business as well. All right. Under new business, we need to change the October meeting date. The ninth is going to stick. Is it 16th, all right? Is that your vacation? Which part, the ninth or the 16th?
The ninth. No, not the week of the ninth.
Yeah, that's the night.
So that's the following month.
I think I'm bad.
Okay. Need a motion to change?
So moved.
Got the second?
Second.
No option.
Waiting is not going to help.
Oh, I'm just, I'm trying to picture my schedule.
Well, hopefully the time will be back.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. We have to go through this process again, presentation of local law. You have been copied with?
Make a motion to reapprove the local law for the building code.
Okay, this is for the zoning amendment?
Yeah.
For the moratorium?
For the moratorium.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Need a ball call on this, or just? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the re-presentation of the building code violations and penalties.
So moved.
Got the second?
Second.
These are all the things that we have dealt with in the past, because of the paperwork, paperwork shuffled, mistake, whatever, we never file with the Secretary of State, so. All those in favor of the second presentation of local law, building code violations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I would like a motion to set a public hearing for both of these, both of these issues, a public hearing on October 2nd, which is a Monday night. The local law number one, zoning moratorium at 6:30, local law number two, penalties for offenses and violations at 7:00.
So moved.
One second?
Second.
Okay.
That is the meeting on vacation, October 2nd, the first week of October. Oh, I'm visualizing in my head, sorry.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. There is that all we needed to do on this?
I guess, I guess kind of, that was the main day of the week, I guess.
What?
It was, I think we need to do the resolution for zoning amendments that, that goes over the secret court matter. That's the property that, that's the date chose, and to submit it to the county.
We have to, we have to, we have to send these amendments into the county, and usually they come back as a local action, so we have to do a secret.
A secret, that's, that's how they tell you to.
A seeker?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's a change in local law.
Okay.
So we have to test a reservation to find the bill just through the agency, the secret.
Yeah.
And have to type one.
Okay, yeah. All right, is this one, did we get this? Yes. Okay, so local law number one is the moratorium, and we sent this into the county before, didn't we? And it came back as a local issue?
The moratorium, we didn't send it to the county because it was temporary moratorium.
Yeah. And now with the revitalization plan, the moratorium will be part of that plan and will be permanent.
Okay.
And that's why we have to move the section 239M, general municipal law, to the county planning agency for their review, and then.
Okay.
Do we need amendment to approve that?
This is the resolution, the secret declaration of lead agency status, providing for environmental review of local number one.
Okay.
So we should do this.
Need a motion for that?
I think it needs to be read through.
Needs to be read.
Okay.
Yeah.
Resolution. Resolution, secret declaration?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution, secret declaration of lead agency status, providing for environmental review, local law number one of 2017, amending chapter 119 zoning of the code of the village of Champlain. Whereas, the village board of the village of Champlain may amend its zoning code by the adoption of local law number one of 2017, amendments of chapter 119 zoning of the code of the village of Champlain, and whereas, six NYCRR, part 617 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPRA, requires that a lead agency be established for conducting environmental review of projects in accordance with local and state environmental law, and whereas, state law specifies that for actions governed by local government, governmental review, the lead agency shall be that local agency which has primary responsibility for approving and carrying out the action, and whereas, this is a type one action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and whereas, the village board of trustees is the local agency with sole responsibility for approving the action, now therefore, be it resolved that no other involved agencies have been identified, and therefore, the village will undertake an uncoordinated review of the action, and be it further resolved that the board of, board of trustees of the village of Champlain hereby declares itself lead agency for the environmental review of local law number one, amendments to chapter 119 zoning. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And we have the public hearing set up for October 2nd. Is that all we need?
No, I think we have to do the second resolution. That, yes, is that, we did do the public hearing, but we also need to do the part of that that refers to referring to.
This is local law number two?
No, it's the local law number one.
Local law number one.
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution to set public hearing and refer to county planning, proposed local law number one of 2017, amendments to chapter 119 of the code of the Village of Champlain. Whereas, proposed local law number one of 2017, a copy of which is attached heretofore, which would amend chapter 119 zoning. Whereas, the village board of trustees desires to hold a public hearing with respect to the adoption of said local law, now therefore, be it resolved, one, that a public hearing will be held by this village board of trustees with respect to the adoption of the aforementioned local law at 7:00 PM on, 7:00 PM on October.
We're doing that, the local law number one is set at 6:30.
Yeah, but it's, it's October 2nd?
Yes.
Okay, so September should be October?
No. You said 7:00 PM, it should be 6:30.
It's 6:30.
Okay. 6:30?
On October 2nd.
On October 2nd of 2017.
Yep.
Is that right?
No.
Okay. 6:30 PM on October 2nd of 2017 at the Champlain Village Office located at 11104, State Route 9, Champlain, New York, 12919. And, two, that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause all required public notices of said hearings to be given as provided by law. And, three, that the proposed local law shall be referred to the county planning, Clinton County planning in accordance with section 239-M of the general municipal law. Motion to approve?
Some.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Have I done my due diligence? All right. Anything else under new business?
No.
Old business. Village sign repair. I took a call from Scott, who was working on the village sign. If we're going to put it back, or if it was going to be painted the original colors, that would have included the necessity to go out and buy gold leaf paint, which would mean that the sign would cost us $700 more. So he asked, I asked what my, what our options were. He said, we can paint it white and the colors will stand out even more. I said, go, that route.
Good choice.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. So that should be, that's in the works. Signage for village vehicles, we've talked about that. We've got the two trucks done, the rest will be done. Office renovations, I got a, I got an update. Greg, just a quick update. We have developed four preliminary designs, four plans for possible renovations. We are still adjusting them, editing and tweaking them before we meet and show them to the village. Thank you for your patience. So I'm assuming that at the October meeting, we should be hearing from AES on the office renovations. Blowers. We have received one, and remember now, I called four different engineering firms. We have received one. I made another, I felt that it was necessary that we get at least more than one. So I called another engineering firm and they are, they are going to forward a request for proposal and a cost to provide preliminary design services for the blowers. So I'm awaiting that. I will call the one that sent, who sent this request in, this proposal in last week. I will tell him that the village board is looking for at least one more quote so that we can make some comparisons here and, and move on in that manner. By finishing up with this, this energy, we can, we can now apply for the, for the grant to help us out there on these blowers. Bike helmet program, do we have an update on that? Do we have people signing up for that?
We have seven applications.
Seven applications, okay? We are still accepting applications for the bike program, bike helmet program, excuse me. Okay, sidewalk bids? How many have we received today?
We received eleven requests for bids and we have just received one as of today.
Okay. Tomorrow is by two, two o'clock?
Some of them come in just before. You're going to open the bids.
Okay, so we will have the bid opening at four o'clock tomorrow?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock tomorrow? Is that two? Okay, we have to be here by two. Then we have to open. Okay, two o'clock, two o'clock tomorrow. Thank you. You laugh, you laugh.
I do.
How does the board want to approach this? Do you want to have another meeting, a special meeting to go over these bids? Or are you willing to let me make a decision here? And Mike, to make a decision here?
Are we allowed to do that?
I think we are.
Depending on the value?
I, I don't know that we have to have, we can research it, but I don't think we have to have a special meeting on this.
I'm okay with that, we don't have to. I trust you, Justin.
Yeah, me too.
Well, we'll see what it is and then we'll research the thing tomorrow. And tomorrow morning, we'll look at the laws, if there are any laws regarding us, and then we'll. All right. Mega program. This is a shared services program. The county's involved. Mega is municipal electric GA. Electric and gas association. The county. This is a supplier for Clinton County. It's also for Sarnac, the town of Sarnac. Well, Eddie, you have been working with this. Would you give us some thoughts, some feelings, some differences?
We had to send them our proposed rates and every account that we have. I sent them all the accounts. I have all the information myself, I have to pay per. At this time, like in October, June, July, August, September, we've been paying like over five cents kilowatt or somewhere. Depending on where, where it is, could be May Lane, could be Industrial Park, could be South Street, whatever. They're, they're never the same. They are like four percent, four cents kilowatt, is what Mega has quoted us. Just under four, four cents. I also found out when we were at the conference is they are now going to start residential.
Really?
Yeah.
Broadening that?
Yeah, yeah. The thing is, if you start with them, if they're going to charge the same price across the board, we can either go one year, two years, or the two and a half years that it's, it runs from, because we're, county's doing a start date of January 1st and it runs to October 2019. It'll be eighteen.
Fifteen months.
Eighteen months is what it, what it runs. So, I mean, it's our choice what we do. If you do the one year, you're going to pay a little bit more. If you extend it longer, it's a little bit less. But we, we did it with direct energy at one time. The other cost that he tells us is that if we get built directly for energy supply from them, that is another cost saving of about $400 a year because you have a fee on your license bill for them to build for these escrow companies.
We separate the bills.
So, yeah.
Sounds very interesting, really.
Yeah. So it's, I mean, it's our choi, I, I said we have nothing to lose by going with that.
Sure, well, right, I made a motion that we go with the eighteen month period from January 1st, 2018 to October 2019. I'll step on that.
No, I think so, 2020?
You just said 2019, so.
I thought it was nineteen.
Sorry, reverse to 2018.
You said eighteen months, so it would be nineteen.
It goes to nineteen.
Twelve, twenty-four, thirty-three.
Yeah, so we, it was, it was our choice.
Twelve, twenty-four, thirty-three.
That's months, yeah.
So I think.
So it's 1-1, 2018 to 1-23, 2020 would be the twenty-four month program.
And, and that's what the counties is, has signed up for. So of course they say, you know, if, if the rates go down, you don't get, it's not going to be any different, which we.
Well, I like to hear that it's a fixed price.
They have. We're still paid the same price.
It's still be.
It'll, it'll still be the same price because you're going to, because we have a contract that you, that you're going to go back, keep back with the county through this Mega program.
Yes.
And this is what you're going to tell them.
It's a shared services. All right, to need the amended resolution?
So how would this affect us with the, if the blowers get put in and we're reducing our use there?
We're, we're still only going to get charged this .36 cents per kilowatt, regardless of how much we use.
Well, I think we're going to get the blowers in, our electric usage at the waste water plant should go down. But once this water plant goes online, it's going to increase.
So it's going to, we're not going to use that one, but we'll use it the other, so. So what are we going to do with the twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six or thirty-three?
It actually runs to October 2020, is that, that's the county contract. You can pick whatever you want.
Twenty-four months.
Yeah. October 20 wouldn't be twenty-four months.
No.
So we're going to.
It should be December 30th.
Yeah, we're going to go January.
End date. Start date is 1-1, 2018, end date will be 1-23.
1-23, 2020.
Okay.
I amended my motion to January 1st, 2018 to October 23rd, 2020. Someone come here, yeah.
Twenty-four. We start in January.
Ending in January?
Yeah. We're going to do the twenty-two months, the twenty-one.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, we have a resolution. First, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trusty Trembling, or Trusty, Trusty Garrett?
Aye.
Trusty Thatcher?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Motion carries. Is there any other old business appearing? Wanting to, Mike? Yeah, windows are done.
We need to get two more shades.
I'm not putting them in. I'm not putting them in. Yeah, you know, I will. Okay. If there's no other new business, no one other old business, motion to adjourn.
Some more?
Second? All in favor? Thank you all.